Wait a minute here. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting. I'd like to call the meeting of the Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors to order for October thirteenth, two thousand sixteen. Ask the General Counsel to please call the roll.
President Viall.
Go ahead, go to the roll then do the flag slogan.
President Viall.
Here.
Director Winskill?
Here.
Director Koff? Here. Director Hines?
Here.
Now please rise for the flag slogan to be led by Director Koff, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yes, I do. Chair would move to excuse Director Ushka.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. She is excused. Vice President Ushka, if you don't know, is accompanying our Lincoln students in China. So I've been, we've been getting little reports back and forth and it looks like they're just having an amazing time. So it'll be fun when she gets back. She can tell us all all what went on. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Adoption of the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved in second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, I'm sorry, are there any questions or comments by members of the board on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion is, agenda's adopted by four oh. Item six, I'm trying to be fast so we can all get out of here and get home. So it seems like it's going a little bit quicker just because of the weather. Recognition of staff, students, and community. Item six one, recognition of four Mount Tahoma High School students. Um, who is gonna do this one?
Mr. Bobell, are you in the room? No. Fantastic. We have a, we have a wonderful guest. I'm gonna call you up here, Teresa.
Yeah, Teresa, you come do it.
Teresa is our Executive Director of Communities and Schools in Tacoma. And the Tacoma Public Schools Office of Equity and Achievement recommends the Board of Directors recognize four students recipients of the first annual's Communities and School Hire, helping interns reach excellent scholarship awards. And on behalf of this nomination, we have Executive Director of Communities and School, Ms. Teresa Maxwell. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia.
Thank you, President Viall and members of the board and Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Garcia. I also wanted to recognize our Board Chair, Garrett Nyland, and Tricia Tracy, our Site Coordinator at Mount Tahoma High School. It's a real pleasure to enjoy to be here tonight to recognize four students. These students have been intentionally working very hard to overcome a lot of barriers in their life before they were selected to do this internship. And so Communities and Schools is a dropout prevention organization. And so our whole mission is to surround students with a community of support and empower them to stay in school and succeed in their life. And we could not do this without the partnership with the Tacoma School District for all these years. We've been at Mount Tahoma and Kevin Kinnear has been a wonderful principal to work with there. And again, the higher program was in, basically created to help these kids create that career connection between the students and the real world workforce. And the whole intention was to increase youth opportunities for their future employment. And while exposing them to a variety of different career fields out there. And what we noticed is that these students were able to connect the dots between the workplace and engaging and why they're engaged, they need to be engaged in school, why attendance matters, why their participation matters at school. And so with that, I'd like Tricia to come up. We'd like to recognize the students. But I'd also like to thank Lauren Cohen with MC Construction down at Point Ruston. It's community leaders like himself that had really put up and sponsored this internship to make this possible for these students. And we have, Tricia, do you wanna kinda share? She works directly with the kids. And if you're ever at Mount Tahoma, if you ever get a chance to go into her room, she's a huge resource. Her room is like a little mini-market. And so whatever those kids needs, she is more than ninety percent chance she has it in her room for those kids.
So like Teresa said, these students were a part of a summer internship with us. They, together, they served over seven hundred hours this summer. So I just wanna give them a round of applause for dedicating their summer to us. They're just back there. So we've got four students with us tonight who participated. They were our first ever CIS interns. And we've got Autumn Lowe, Dustin Hemmings, Anthony Wayrock, and Leanna Esquivel.
If we could have you folks come on up, we'd like to give you a handshake and congratulate you personally. Just wanna thank the Communities and School staff, leadership, and Board of Directors. Your work in our, our community and dedication to supporting our students is truly inspirational and is so vital. And we're so thankful that you're such committed partners. And so thank you very much.
I'll just echo that. Community and Schools has been one of our longest standing partnerships in Tacoma Public Schools. And it's one that we value and again, really, really appreciate what you do for our kids. Cause as we all know, we don't do this alone. Thank you. Moving on, members of the public wishing to address the board. I understand we have some.
We, we have three tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. School Board members encourage public participation. Your input is appreciated. If you would like to address the board, please follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the School Board Secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Card submitted after the public comment period is ended will not be considered at this session. The Deputy Superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You'll have three minutes to share your comments. We have a, a screen over there that will tell you when you reach one minute, it will give you a ding. And then when your time is up, it will give you another ding. And please keep your comments within the three minute period. And as always, please keep your comments civil and respectful as we are in the, in the school district's largest classroom. Thank you, Dr. Garcia, please.
First tonight, speaking forward to the next move internship program, Laura Jones. Up next will be Bronwyn Jones.
Hello, thanks for inviting me here tonight. I appreciate this opportunity to voice my support for the next move internship program. One of the first things that impressed me about this program was the number of participating businesses. I remember looking at the list when I first learned about the program and thinking how cool it was that so many Tacoma companies would step up and provide these kinda opportunities for kids. Carlos, I, Carlos, I think it's really great that you took Bronwyn on. And I know she enjoyed working from you, for you. And judging from her growing collection of tools, I know she will always be involved in woodworking in some capacity. Carlos is the business owner of Madera Furniture Company. Another thing that impressed me about Next Move was the timing, how kids have this great opportunity to explore careers while they're still in high school. I did a couple of internships, but I was well into college in my junior and senior years. Looking back, I wonder how my career path may or may not have changed if I'd had this kind of opportunity while I was still in high school. I remember watching the video on the Next Move site and how it talks about new and emerging occupations in today's economy that require knowledge and technical ability, coding being an example. I know there's coding schools that are different than four-year colleges. Bronwyn, you like my voice. This is nerve wracking. I'm a college graduate and enjoy it and appreciate the value that a college education brings. But in today's world, the cost to attend college is daunting, even at in-state public schools. There was an article in Consumer Reports a month or so ago with a headline that was something like, "Going to College Kinda Ruined My Life", which I find incredibly disheartening. In my family, back in the day, there was an expectation that my brother and I would immediately go to college. We both did, and it was the right fit for me, but not so much for my brother. Watching him search for a path after he dropped out and now coming face to face with the financial challenges I helped Bronwyn navigate life after high school, I've come to believe that it is a disservice not to help kids explore a wider range of options in today's world. What's so great about Next Move is that it offers glimpses into a variety of careers involving a variety of education and training. And of course, regardless of which direction they choose to explore, the kids all benefit from the experience of interviewing, showing up, and doing the work. And it's a great base of experience to build on. So thank you for supporting this program.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Bronwyn Jones, followed by Carlos Taylor Swanson.
Hi, I'm Bronwyn. I'm a senior at Stadium High School. And I participated in the Next Move internship program last year at Carlos's business, Madera Furniture Company. And I was asked to come here to share a little bit about my experience. I first found woodworking as like a filler class for my schedule. And I wasn't very interested in it, but I, I decided to go along with it and see what, what it was all about. And I found I really enjoyed it. And when the internship program came along, I thought it'd be a great opportunity to further my skills in woodworking. And so I decided to take part in it. And then that's when I met Carlos and I found that working in the shop was a great experience. Not only just like learning about woodworking, but seeing how a small business is run and just for future job experience. It was very helpful with that. I learned how to use a bunch of different tools. At school, I mainly focused on building an acoustic guitar. And then when I went to Carlos's shop, I learned a lot about cabinetry and furniture making and dealing with customers and a lot of great skills that I'll keep with me as long as I'm alive. Yeah, I gained insight into running a small business and my internship turned into a summer job. And I actually got to earn money doing something I enjoy a lot. And right now, I'm in the process of putting together my college applications. And I feel like my internship helped me stand out because it gives me a great story to tell. Plus, it gives me confidence in approaching other job opportunities. I think the Next Move program is a great opportunity for students to get real world experience. And I'm grateful for the opportunity it supported and offered me. And thank you, Carlos, for the patience with my busy schedule and, you know, taking me in and everything. And I just really appreciate the opportunity for a bunch of different students to participate in this program. It's a great program. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Carlos, are you up next?
I am.
Okay. Well, you're coming up here. Thank you for being one of the businesses that was willing to take our kids on and open their eyes to other opportunities.
Well, like I always say, it's anything for the kids. I didn't prepare anything, so I'm just gonna, you know, talk off the cuff here. I've, I've had Madera Furniture Company, first, I'm Carlos Taylor Swanson, and my business is Madera Furniture Company. We've been in business for ten years. And from very early on, I've been, probably since, from two thousand seven, I've been involved with the internship program. Early on, it was with students from the School of the Arts. And I was thrilled this year when I learned that we're now taking students from all over the Tacoma School District. And when I learned about, about Bronwyn's experience and her interest, I, you know, I was excited to have her in. The variety of students that we've had over the years has been varied. Some were kind of interested in woodwork. Maybe they didn't find something else in, in the list of, of other opportunities and sort of, you know, came our way. I've had students that helped me with keeping, at, at one point in time, I had an art gallery in my front room. And so they helped me with gallery, gallery work, you know, as a gallerist. I've had students that were interested in, in product design. And they would come in and, you know, learn about the shop, learn, you know, about how we designed pieces, and then watch the production of those pieces happen. They, I, I encouraged them to design something for themselves. And in this one particular instance, this young man designed a desk for his, his bedroom. And then I gave him the opportunity to actually make it. And, and so it was a valuable experience for them to realize, okay, well, if I'm, if I design something this way, you know, how do I put it together? How does it, how does it all fit together? And how, how's the design gonna change as, as they are able to, to just kinda visualize it in three dimensions? Bronwyn's experience, okay, she, she idly said she made an acoustic guitar. I'm telling you, that was a absolutely beautiful acoustic guitar that she made. And she came in with this, this drive that very few of the interns had. And a lot of that gets, that, that goes back to the encouragement she received from the woodshop teacher that she worked with at Stadium. And, and I think that the experience that she had is, is gonna, like she said, is gonna carry her through, through much of her life. Certainly, in the early parts, as she's going through interviews and learning about different, different aspects of, of what it is to, to have a career. And I can see I'm almost out of time, but the Next Move internship is, is just an extremely valuable asset to our community. And I thank the Tacoma Schools for offering that to our students.
So I'd like to ask a question. Where is your company located?
Uh, we're right downtown, real close to the melting pot. If you know, we're in the alley just right behind the next block south of there.
And then I wanted to say to Bronwyn, my daughter went to Stadium and she wanted to take woodworking and they would not let her because she was a female. And, um,
That was not recently.
Yeah, that was not recent. But she's still to this day loves to work with her hands. She's an accountant, but she also builds things and works with her hands. And she, it would've been wonderful for her to do that and the teacher wouldn't let her in. So.
Interesting.
Thankfully.
Times have changed.
Thankfully, things have changed.
So we have wonderful Next Move staff in the audience and just wanna thank them for their leadership and continued support. Next Move is a wonderful program across the district. Carlos, I was, the irony is, I was just last, last weekend looking for furniture and I came across your work. And so anyone that's watching at home, I really encourage them to visit your shop, to do a little Google search. Your, your work is absolutely gorgeous and beautiful and you have a lot to be proud of. And we're thankful for your investment in our shared students. So thank you.
Thank you again. Wonderful. Superintendent's report, is that it?
That is all of our public comments.
Don't clear that comment period time over.
So, on behalf of the Superintendent, we have another irony tonight. We are going to talk about summer school, although it doesn't feel much like summer out tonight. But as you know, the board is, board members, you've charged us to really think about how do we extend the year and extend the day for all of our kids. And so we're gonna give you a very concise update. You've got some other materials and background in the past of this. And then we'd welcome any questions you have. I have Dr. Sandra Lindsay Brown and Mr. Kerry Sutton here that work in our Title I office. That they facilitate various departments that all work together to provide summer school programming. And so without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sandra Lindsay Brown.
Good evening, School Board Trustees and Deputy Superintendent Garcia. Thank you so much for that recognition. Again, I'm Sandra Lindsay Brown and this is Kerry Sutton, our support program associate. We're excited to be here tonight with you to provide you information on our recent summer programs. So as you would, you can look at the monitors and we'll provide that information to you. As you can see, our objective was, is to provide you information, comprehensive overview of the impact of our summer programs for the summer of two thousand and sixteen. And you will be, I hope you will be excited as we are to provide you this information because we're gonna give you a macro level impact of what occurred over the summer, how we met success, our next steps, and provide an opportunity for questions and answers.
All right, so I'm really excited to jump right in and kinda share a lot of the amazing things that have been going on in the summer. So we're gonna start with what's new. So we had our AP Summer Bridge Program, which really was a two-fold approach to creating access and success for AP students. And then we had our Lister Summer Learning Loss Prevention Program. We served about fifty-six Lister students for a six-week program. It's a really amazing partnership where the YMCA came alongside of us. We provided the instructional piece. They supported that, as well as providing the enrichment and field trip component of the program. For our Jump Start Program, it was the first year that we had opt-out, meaning that students were automatically enrolled and they thus had to opt-out. So the pro of that was that it eliminated the barrier to registration for thousands of kids. Literally thousands of kids. But also created some logistical challenges in terms of schools not knowing the exact amount of students that were gonna be there, and as well as some nursing allocation support. And then we had the Immersion of World Languages Program. That was actually canceled due to low enrollment. So on this slide, we have an overarching statistical breakdown of our summer programs for two thousand and sixteen and how it compares to fourteen and fifteen. So in the far right column, you can see we serve roughly sixty-five hundred students this year out of the thirty thousand that are in the district. So that's twenty-one percent of our population attended summer school. And as we look at two thousand and fifteen, where we served about fifty-one hundred students, we can see that we had twenty-eight percent growth from the previous year and about fourteen hundred more students. So as you work your way down that slide, you can see the dark gray areas, high school, middle, and elementary school, and the totals for each of those. And then at the bottom, you can see that we served roughly forty-two thousand meals over the summer.
So I just wanna point out, you know, six thousand, sixty-five thousand, or sixty-five hundred, not sixty-five thousand, sixty-five hundred students, that's larger than many districts in our state. And we're, we're just a handful of folks that are working, Mr. Sutton spends a lot of time on this. And so it's quite impressive. And then it's truly a team effort when you look about the number of meals, buses, healthcare and stuff. And so it's truly a collaboration amongst a variety of different departments. And we're just ecstatic that, and we believe passionately, in order to close the achievement gap, you have to close the opportunity gaps. And this is a sign that we're, we're not there yet, but we're, we're starting to close more opportunity gaps.
What I think would be interesting, and I know that Director Hines and I, when we both came on, the first report we saw, we said, no, we don't like this. Would be great to go back and see what the two thousand and twelve numbers look like. Give us a real example of how we've grown.
Absolutely.
It'd be kinda fun to look at.
Yeah.
Cause I know it's been exponential growth.
Sure.
Great.
So as we take a look at our demographic breakdown, we, for summer two thousand and sixteen, it has the comparison to the state and district averages. And we stay within plus or minus two percent of our district average, with the exception of students receiving free and reduced lunch. You can see that towards the bottom under the other category. We increased that by five percent. And the other one that was different, excuse me, was students of two or more race. And that increased by three percent.
Information on Jump Start for the summer of two thousand and sixteen. If you look in the far right category, the column, two thousand and sixteen percentages, please keep in mind that that information that is shared with you is based on the total of two thousand and sixteen students in Tacoma Public Schools that actually attended this summer. So for kindergarten, you see that fifty-one percent of Tacoma students attended, based on the total population of students enrolled. And for fifth and sixth grade, you have fifty-nine percent. And for eighth and ninth, sixty-one percent of our, again, total population of Tacoma students attended our Jump Start programs over the summer.
So as we quickly dive into the different Jump Start programs, we'll start with kindergarten. So we, this year, schools did not have the option, I guess, to opt-out, whereas last year they did. So we added eight more schools. And we assume that based on those two thousand and fifteen averages, we would add about two hundred and twenty-six more students. In actuality, we had four hundred and thirty-three more students. So we had a sixty percent increase in, in, in students attending kindergarten Jump Start. For sixth grade Jump Start, it was highlighted by First Creek, which had eighty-one percent more students than the previous year. So overall, we had thirty-nine percent increase. And then for ninth grade Jump Start, we had a thirteen percent increase, which was highlighted by Lincoln, which had a hundred and eighty-eight more students than two thousand and fifteen. And as we move on to credit retrieval, this year, we actually had less students who attended, but more students who earned credit. So on the far right, you can see the course breakdown. So we had seventy-three language arts credits earned, or courses completed, twenty-four elective, so on and so forth. And then on the left, you can see that we served five hundred and seventy students, forty percent earned credit. Whereas last year, we served seven hundred and seventy students and only twenty-eight earned credit, twenty-eight percent earned credit. So lastly, forty-six percent, or excuse me, forty-six students earned multiple course credit.
How did we meet success? If you look at this slide, there were eleven total goals for our summer programs. And they were stretch goals. So we were reaching for the max. And we had positive movement towards reaching our goals. And they were, how they were achieved, how they were achieved and they were recognized. So as you can see, there were eleven goals for the summer. And we felt really great about them. Again, we had high percentages because we wanted to be outstanding. And we really see progression as we move towards reaching those goals every summer.
And one thing that I wanna highlight is one of our amazing partnerships, and that was with the Boys and Girls Club. So for our reading camp program, we had ten sites. Seven were at our schools and three were at Boys and Girls Clubs. And one amazing thing about that partnership is kids could stay after and, and come before our reading camp hours. So reading camp went from eight-thirty to one-thirty, and they could stay after and remain at the club for the duration of the day. Also, their siblings could come and participate in the, in the Boys and Girls Club the whole day. And once reading camp concluded on the twenty-ninth of July, they could stay for the duration of the summer, so throughout August. So I really appreciated how that partnership met the needs of our families, families and students.
I wanted to provide you some information regarding some parent testimonials that occurred over the summer. Parents were very pleased with the offerings that we, we had over the summer. And this is just one. This particular parent said, "My son came into reading camp with anxiety and a dislike for reading." She really wanted him to develop that love of reading. And she said, "He came home excited every day and began to ask more and more questions, wanting to go to the library and so forth and so on." And she said, "She turned around to find out that, man, you know, he was deep into his books." So she said, "He usually brings home toys, but this time he's bringing home books." So, you know, she just really wanted us to know that. And she said, "Her son found out, found a love of reading and she, and he's doing it every day." And she said, "To her, as a mom, it was worth a million, a million bucks." So she said, "Thank you so much." Excuse me. Then we had a student testimonial. And the student is a sixth grade Jump Start student. And she said, "I thought middle school was going to be really scary because a lot changed. I was not ready to find that out, but Jump Start changed that for me. I felt more comfortable about middle school. I met new kids and I learned about my teacher. I'm glad that there was a time for this to happen. Thank you." And then another sixth grade student mentioned something similar, but they just really appreciated Jump Start. And it was an exciting way to learn about the upcoming school year and getting more familiar with the peers. It did make it a lot easier to move into middle school. It helped me feel more ready and that helped me realize what I could do. So the anxiety seemed to settle down a little bit. The Jump Start program seemed to be successful all around. And we really wanted to just highlight those testimonials from students and a parent.
So as we take a look at the next steps for our summer programs, I mean, we're already knee-deep into the summer two thousand and seventeen. So our programs ended August thirty-first, maybe about a week off, and then we kinda dug back in. So I really wanna develop a comprehensive twelve-month guide to our summer learning, cause it's really a year-round endeavor. Also, creating a system to efficiently register students and creating a more robust and easily accessible online registration for our families. Streamlining our programs while still allowing for innovation and creativity. And lastly, continue building on our strong partnerships, especially with the Foundation for Tacoma Students Out of School Network. So that concludes our presentation. And I do wanna echo Dr. Garcia. We, there was an incredible amount of staff support, all of you. We had over five hundred staff participate this summer. We have frontline staff working directly with our students. Those kinda in, you know, in the background doing a lot of work. So it really was a collective effort to make this a successful summer. So with that being said, are there any questions that you have?
Questions or comments? Questions or comments?
Yeah, congratulations on the results. As Director Viall alluded to, certainly when I first came on the board, the summer school didn't make sense to me and the vision that this board has espoused. You have done a marvelous job of bringing to fruition, and I know it's just the tip of the iceberg. And when you think about the exponential benefits that this is gonna give kids and families in Tacoma, I think it's time and resources well invested. So, congratulations and thank you. I like the stretch goals. Let's set big, hairy, audacious goals and then challenge ourselves to meet them. The display of demographic information, I feel like, ah, because I've been the one who's harping, and I feel bad at times, but I think you nailed it. And it provides context. It makes the numbers meaningful because we understand how it relates back to the district and the state. And are we underperforming or overperforming? So, that was really helpful. And then just anecdotally, I know my now-seventh grader last year benefited tremendously from the middle school Jump Start. He was terrified, and he came away from that week, "I can get into my locker. I know where to get lunch. I went in the locker room. I'm not gonna get stuffed in a garbage can, met my counselor." And it was interesting because our friends whose kids did not participate last year, almost to a student, the ones that participated had a more positive transition, and the ones that did not struggled. And they struggled for a while, well into the school year. So, I think that there is legitimacy to the program, and that opt-out versus opt-in maybe compels people. The only negative that I heard, a few emails back just on communicating the Jump Start, people are on vacation or out of town, missed out on the opportunity. So, as we're a continuous improvement-type district, if there are ways for us to continue to get better at the communication piece, because I think it's such a great program, we don't want anybody to miss out on it. And if we take into consideration, how do we reach everybody? So, maybe some non-traditional communication methods so that we're truly involving everybody in the community. But again, congratulations. I think it's very impressive, very exciting where this is gonna go.
Thank you, Director Heinz. And on a final note, I just would like to also thank, there were a lot of internal departments that were involved in this process. As you heard Carrie mention, we started in March trying to prepare for summer 2016. So, I just really would like to provide a big shout-out to, like, HR, payroll, facilities, and food services, because we had to meet with those folks on an ongoing basis. So, it's not just Title I lap. It was everyone. So, I just would like to say thank you to them as well, to those departments that helped us make it successful. And we're gonna continue, and we'll take note of your comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director Cobb?
I just wanna echo Director Heinz's comments about middle school Jump Start. Our son did it, participated last year too, and I think his transition was smooth in part because he participated. And about third-grade reading camp, we also have personal experience with that. And I wanna give a shout-out to Mr. Oak at Lowell Elementary School. He got our son loving reading, and he didn't think of it as summer school. It was always, "I don't wanna go to summer school, but I wanna go to my summer reading camp." So, it was very much a positive experience for him. The one question I do have is about the World Language Immersion Program. You said it was canceled due to low enrollment. So, what's the plan for next year? Are we gonna need to not do it again, or do we try again with those kinds of programs that we think are good, but just didn't maybe catch on the first year?
So, we're just now analyzing and investigating, and so we'll get back to you with what we find out and what are the interests. And we have some other things up our sleeve for new programming, and we're constantly thinking about what's new as well as what's working. And was it bad architecture or bad execution? And so, with summer immersion camp, we'll be looking at that as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we're not done yet. We're not done yet.
Director Winskill?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We got more to go.
My grandson did basketball camp. I think that was part of the summer school program. He really enjoyed that. And so, this Jump Start, to try to get students in that, maybe if we send home a little notice with the report cards to those affected students in June, saying, "This is coming up," and this is the day. You know, everybody looks at their report card. I bet that would be a good way to get the parents notified. And I also like the idea of different things for summer school, because it used to be the same old thing. Students who hated school came for six more weeks of things that they hated, and I really like the idea that we're doing things a little differently. And kids enjoy it.
Thank you.
Just to echo the rest of the comments, you know, this is such an improvement in summer school getting much more of a positive image. And, you know, obviously, I went to school a long time ago, but when I was in school, Tacoma schools offered big summer programs, not just for picking, you know, they had band camp and orchestra camp. And I think we've got an opportunity to really start thinking about enrichment, which we obviously are. And I really love Jump Start. I mean, my son happened to just fall into a Jump Start when he went to FOS. He had not gone to the schools that fed in there, and he wanted to go, and he was very nervous. But he happened to run into Mr. Ketta, who asked him if he wanted to play football. And Kevin was the, now at Stadium, he was the football coach, and Rob said, "I don't know. I guess." And he had played, and Davis, so he signed him up. So, he spent two weeks before school started and made friends and was no longer nervous or scared and was a part. And I thought, you know, if I ever get an opportunity to be a part of that for all grades, and now here we have it. And I think that, in fact, this year, I'm very pleased that all schools, there's no opting out, that everybody will do it, because I think that relieves, and I think we all remember going to high school or going to junior high school about how scary that was from elementary. And so, thank you. Kudos to you, and we can't wait to see what we're gonna get next year.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Director Garcia?
Thank you, team. Just three final quick notes. The term "camp" is really starting to resonate with versus "school." And so, be prepared for that. Continue that language and culture. Really, a huge shout-out to all of our community partners, and Mr. Sutton mentioned the role of the foundation and to try to align that. These numbers do not include our kids' participation in other programs across the city, which is really exciting. And so, we're working in aligning those efforts as well. And then finally, with any good thing, you have tension. And we just, as a conversation this week at Cabinet, our Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Marakami, said, "You know, we gotta figure out this whole summer school stuff, because we gotta have time to do deep cleans inside the schools and stuff." And I politely said, "That's awesome. That's a great kind of tension to have, where we are using our schools twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year for our kids, and we just can't find a time to clean them because they're there and active." So, we'll wrestle with those tensions as well. Thank you very much, folks. Please beat the weather home.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you again. Moving on, item nine, consent agenda. Chair would entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Second.
Moved in second. Are there any questions by members of the board, items on the consent agenda?
I just had one. As I read through and I see that people are going on various trips, and sometimes it's noted who the people are, and sometimes it's not. And it's, I would really like to see those names, because then if I see them, I can say, "How was that trip?" And, you know, there's one, a music person going, I don't know who, it didn't say who that person was. So, in the future, if possible, I'd like to see those names.
Okay. Director Garcia?
We'll work on making that more consistent. Sometimes we don't label them because there's a spot guaranteed, but we haven't identified who that is. And sometimes we're able to communicate those, but we will definitely take a deeper look and try to make it more consistent where possible.
Any other further questions or comments? Sorry. All those in favor of adoption of consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, agenda is adopted for all. Policy matters. Item ten-one, first reading of policy, thirty-five fifteen, student incentive. Ms. Medina, could you comment on what that is, please? Thank you.
So, this is a policy that would provide our schools and departments with some parameters around providing student incentives. And there's also a section in there about providing corporate incentives and what it means. If we did get a corporate incentive, who owns that, and put some limitations on dollar amounts as well as purpose. And this is a first reading, and the second reading we would bring back. And then if you had any questions or changes, we'd be happy to address those. We would bring this back at the next board meeting.
Okay. So, is this a new policy, just quickly?
It is a new policy. We didn't have one currently.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We do have an employee incentive policy.
Right. We did not have one for students.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Right, we'll look forward to you bringing that back. Item number eleven, quarterly financial update. The presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on our district website, and this is the time that we will hear for the third quarter. Two thousand fifteen, sixteen financial presentation.
So, I'm very excited to introduce you to a new member of our team. This is Allison Duskins, and she comes to us from Nordstrom's. She is our newest financial analyst. She replaces somebody who took a different position in the district. And she's going to provide you with our May, which is our third quarter financial. It's a little late in the year to be getting a third quarter financial, and I know that for the viewers at home, that that's probably a little unusual considering it's October. We're closing the books right now, so we won't have a year-end report until probably closer into December. And then we start with the quarterly reports quickly after that. So, Allison is going to provide you with a brief update on our financial position as of the third quarter of last year.
Good evening. Oh, should be on. Okay. Good evening. I am here to provide you with a high-level summary of enrollment, staffing, as well as our general fund status for Q-three, two thousand fifteen, sixteen. On the first slide, we have, it shows the budgeted and projected annual average student FTE, again, through Q-three, and as well as the comparison to last year. Budgeted enrollment is twenty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty, and overall, we are projecting enrollment to be a hundred and forty-seven above budget. And the biggest variance in that is coming from elementary, which is projected to be eighty-five FTE above budget, and running start, which is projected to be seventy-nine above budget. Compared to the two thousand fourteen, fifteen enrollment, we are projected to have a decrease of a hundred and twenty-four. That biggest variance in the decrease is coming from high school enrollment, which is projected to decrease by fifty-seven FTE from last year. And then just a side note on these figures, again, these figures exclude the nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight budgeted-funded full-day kindergarten, which is currently projected to be seventy FTE above budget. And then slide two is showing our budgeted and projected annual average for staffing. Certificated staffing is projected to be ninety-one under budget, and classified staffing is projected to be seventy-two under budget. Compared to last year, certificated staffing has an increase of nine, and classified staffing has an increase of seventeen. And then for certificated staffing, the biggest variance is coming from basic ed, which is seventy-five below budget. And then for classified staffing, that variance comes from support services, which is currently forty-one FTE below budget. Slide three has our budgeted and projected beginning and ending general fund balance through Q-three. The beginning fund balance was five-point-seven million above budget. Revenues came in three-point-three million below what we had originally budgeted, and then expenditures are projected to be eight-point-five million under. The majority of that revenue decrease is coming from state special purchase, purpose, which is projected to be four-point-eight million below just due to unused grant capacity.
And I would just interject right there to say, the ending fund balance being eleven million dollars higher is what we had talked about when we adopted our budget back in June, July. And then we said we would have carryover dollars that we would use out of this year's fifteen, sixteen's unspent monies to roll over into the sixteen, seventeen budget. So, that's part of what you're seeing there.
And then of the expenditure variance, the majority of that is coming from salaries and benefits, which are projected to be sixteen-point-five million below budget. And then overall, the total, we are projecting the ending fund balance to be eleven million above budget. And then slide four is showing projected monthly operational savings. We began the year with eleven-point-four million in the assigned-to-future operations account. We are now projected to save five-point-seven million more to bring the total up to seventeen million, which is on top of the five percent debt and fiscal district requirement. And then our final slide just shows the budgeted and projected breakdown of the different sources that do make up the total general fund balance. And then of the eleven million, debt and fiscal management is a thousand, a hundred thousand under budget. Carryover is one-point-eight million above budget. Curriculum and instruction is one-point-three million above. Restricted for debt service is currently flat, and then assigned-to-future operations is eight million above budget.
And it's that assigned-to-future operations budget that we built into the sixteen, seventeen. And the others are restricted, so.
Mm-hmm. The others, we don't have any choice.
And that is all I have, unless you have some questions.
Any questions or comments?
Just on slide four, to what do you attribute the additional cost savings?
The additional cost savings are primarily salaries. Some underspending of discretionary expenditures, but primarily salaries and benefits.
Okay. I wondered if there's a correlation with the lean training and also budgeting by priorities, if that's squeezing anything else out?
I think that that's probably an underlying factor, not probably, but it's an underlying factor to why we keep saving money. The things that we're doing district-wide and the conversations that we're having about whether or not we really need to add and what we really have to have and where we can cut, those are all participating in the fact that we continue to save.
That's great. Cost savings are good.
Super. Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Great. Thank you, and helps us know where we are. And for the, maybe those who are watching, the board made a very concerted decision last spring and last, before we adopted the budget, that we weren't going to get into any future larger expenditures until we know what the consequences of the McCleary decision are and what can happen potentially to our levies, expenditures. So, we're gonna stay in a holding pattern. We will spend some money on some things, but we're not gonna do any deep dives into any of our reserves until we really know where we are. And who knows how long that's gonna take, so editorial comment. All right, moving on, curriculum instruction, we have nothing.
One previous, eleven-point-one is the third quarter.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Garcia jumped over that. Third-quarter financial update. Ms. Medina?
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors accept the third-quarter two thousand fifteen, sixteen unaudited financial report as prepared by the Finance Department.
Move approval.
Second.
Ben moved in seconded to adopt the third-quarter two thousand fifteen, sixteen unaudited financial report. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Financial update is adopted. Now, item twelve, curriculum instruction.
None tonight.
Thank you. Business matters. Thirteen-one, approval of inter-local agreement with Lake Washington School District. And Ms. Medina, I think that's yours.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent to sign the inter-local agreement with Lake Washington School District.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Are there any questions of the board of Ms. Medina? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is adopted. Item thirteen-two, approval of the two thousand sixteen, seventeen contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Safe Streets.
The Deputy Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors approve the contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Safe Streets campaign for the period of September one, two thousand sixteen, through August thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Move approval. Director Heinz, can you second that?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. I have a question. Director Winskill represents us on that board. Should she recuse herself, Chief Counsel?
Yes, she should.
Debbie, would you have to leave the room?
I don't think I have to leave the room.
Yes, you do.
Do I, Susan?
Yes. That's been what we have.
Well.
I think recusal just means not having to vote on the item and not speaking in favor or against it, just not participating in the discussion or the.
I would like some clarification on that, because when I was mayor, we had to leave the room, and it has been since I've been here on the board. So, I would appreciate you looking into that.
I will do so. Yes, thank you.
Make sure that we're doing the right thing. So, I've had some experience in that area, and I just wanna make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do. Any questions or comments by members of the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions adopted, three, zero. Other business. Item fourteen, fourteen-one, adoption of resolution number two thousand fifteen and acceptance of contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Babbitt Newman Construction Company. Mr. Marakami, I think this is yours.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution number two thousand fifteen for the acceptance of project completion and approve the acceptance of contract for Babbitt Newman Construction Company for the Washington Elementary School remodel and additions.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Ben moved in seconded to adopt resolution number two thousand fifteen and accept the contract, and acceptance of contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Babbitt Newman Construction Company. Are there any questions or comments to the board? I assume that this closes the books on Washington.
It does.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, great, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, uh, resolution is adopted, four oh. Our report to the board, item fifteen one, and I'll give everybody a chance to get up here and read this. Biennial report of the Urban Collaborative. Uh, those of you, most of you know that, I believe it was four years ago or five years ago, we had a audit of our special ed program by the Urban Collaborative out of Boston, and talked to us about how we needed to bring our program into the, uh, twenty first century for our students. And we've been making progress, and we're having our biennial report. And I have Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Ms. Troffer, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, Director Viall, Board of Directors, and Deputy Superintendent Garcia. I'm pleased to sit here tonight with John Bell, Director of Student Services. As you mentioned, we do have tonight, we have a report to share with you from our last report of the Urban Collaborative recommendations last spring. We have some exciting data to share with you, and then we will share next steps that we have planned for the sixteen seventeen school year. Before we move right into the report, we want to just make a quick reference to the appendix that begins on slide twenty three. We share that and keep that in each of the reports as a reference for our viewers, and, um, for any of your quick reference back to the number of the recommendations and, um, other resources to refer to. Do you have the clicker?
Thank you, and we appreciate that. Those appendices are always very helpful.
Yes, thank you. So our first slide, we've created an updated timeline at a glance for you. This slide is a snippet of the timeline, and we have a full copy, um, for your reference, as well as posted online to see the, the full picture of the timeline. This timeline re, aligns all eighteen of the Urban Collaborative recommendations with our district strategic goals, and we've indicated by recommendation, actions that have been taken and actions that have planned, and we have extended this out to two thousand twenty to align with the district strategic, strategic plan timeline. As part of our continuous improvement commitment, our leadership team worked to refine our department goals last spring. Our goals are all aligned with the Urban Collaborative, and specifically aligned to the district strategic plan that you so beautifully created to drive improvements for every student. Six of the department goals are district benchmarks, and the other six, while they are not district benchmarks, they are in support of each of the district benchmarks building towards that. Each goal has been crafted to be SMART. SMART as in specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-based. Our team worked to gather the data to make sure that we've got the measurements, and to do the calculations to work towards the attainable aspect of each of the goals. On the next slide, this is just an excerpt of three of the goals, just to share with you of the, showing the SMART components. In each goal there, you will see the measurement, you'll see the baseline and the target, you'll see the timelines, and then how we are measuring each of those goals. Tonight, these happen to be three of the goals, that, three of several goals that we will be sharing some data. John Bell has the fun part with the data to share with you. I'm just a little jealous of that part. Just a little. The next slide we have here is a reference to our instructional support. I shared this with you, knowing that Assistant Superintendent, uh, Verhar shared the first two items at the Early Learning Report on September eighth. My point in highlighting these this evening for you is specifically around the recommendation number two, around addressing the common core. That is work that the Special Education Department alone, we, we certainly couldn't do that alone. This is work that we do in collaboration, and while we have been working over the last several years to improve instruction for students, specifically with students with disabilities, we would say that's been more in pockets, and these items that we share with you tonight are highlighting systemic approaches to make a difference for our students. The first two, again, our Assistant Superintendent Verhar did highlight these two, and I can just touch on those. It's really the literacy framework was, um, implemented and, um, trained over eight hundred teachers over the summer, and, um, wrapped up the final pieces of that in September. And with, and that was all teachers, that was, uh, all teachers at the elementary, including our interventionists, our ELL and special ed teachers. Resources were purchased, and the resources look like more books in the bookrooms, as well as, uh, the classroom libraries at independent levels to address the on-grade level and the developmental level of all students, as well as professional development resources. New this year, we started cross-departmental instructional facilitator meetings. That was something in a ha that we had last year of working to get all of our instructional facilitators together, and the first meeting happened last week, and that was, um, we received great praise and appreciation from the instructional facilitators as they're all working to come together to help all students. And the last item on this slide is the student-centered learning teams. Those are focused at our elementary level, and those I've also started up. I think the first round, uh, took place at last week or this week, and that's, uh, where they're really looking at problems of practice, and they're working in vertical teams. So it's not just, for instance, a fourth grade team, but it's the K five team with interventionist teachers at the school as well, working together, very much in a plan, do, study, act model. Again, whoops, another item. Another item that you heard from Assistant Superintendent Verhar was that we had an elementary literacy institute in June. In June, the week after school got out, and we had over three hundred elementary teachers attending this. This was classroom teachers, this were special ed teachers, ELL teachers, title and lap teachers, alongside with their instructional coaches and their principals. At this day, um, the, the first two days were focusing on the tier one, the core instruction for students, and then day three was focused on intervention. And I just share these learning targets with you to, to demonstrate to the focus on the intervention. This was our opportunity to first roll out to our elementary teachers, connecting the dots, connecting to Tacoma whole child, bringing in the literacy framework, and then reaching out for their input, their feedback, and, um, and ask for their partnership for the development of an intervention framework that will serve as the companion guide to the literacy framework. We, uh, vetted our guiding principals out with our, with our teachers, heard back from them, and then we received names from teachers wishing to serve on the committee, and we have a team at present time of thirty six elementary teachers that will serve on that team, working to develop that. Dr. Lindsay Brown, who you heard this evening with the summer school work, is leading the development of the intervention framework that will roll out with the, the framework and the PD, the professional development, the spring and summer of two thousand seventeen. That was work that Dr. Garcia referenced at the last board meeting as well. The next slide here, oh, we've got a couple pieces missing with it there. So the next slide we have here is a slide that we've been using across our system to demonstrate the timelines of, of our work and show the full picture, connecting the dots, demonstrating the multi-tier system of supports that first was the beginning with the social emotional supports for children, moving into the development of our assessment system and the articulation of the tier one literacy instruction, and now moving into the academic intervention guidance and resources. This was a slide that we used at that elementary literacy intervention, um, institute in June to help connect the dots for the teachers. Some other pieces of professional development that we've been up to, uh, since our last report was, we did our fourth annual inclusive practices conference in August, and we had a hundred and eighty staff members attending that. There was general education teachers and special education teachers representing thirty nine of our schools. At that, we had a national expert presenting on differentiated strategies, and for those attendees, we purchased a resource of fifty instructional strategies to help support students, and then we have that posted online for all of our staff to be able to access. We did co-teaching training with all of our secondary teachers within the, um, Admin Institute the first week of August, and we purchased Marilyn Friend. She is the national expert on co-teaching. We purchased her book for all secondary administrators and co-teacher teams. And with that, I'll, I'll turn it to John Bell.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, I have the, the pleasure of introducing our post-secondary actions with respect to transition in the Living Studio for the community-based transition program. Uh, as with Betsy Minor Reed as Principal, and Steve Murakami's work in putting together, uh, a classroom called the Living Studio, students have the opportunity to cycle through on, on certain days of the week that reflect their, their instructional needs related to home-based living skills. And so you see a picture of a kitchenette, a living room and, and dining area, and the, uh, the picture of the, the laundry facility. These students are, are learning to cook and to clean, to, to, um, fold their laundry. As, as one parent reported, she was so excited to have her daughter come home and talk about having learned to fold socks that day. It's now become her daily chore. So in the laundry, they're, they're excited about what they're doing, and they're eager to get their opportunities in the Living Studio. Uh, additionally, we have sixty interns that are cycling through this program, but also within the post-secondary transition. Sorry, I had the slide behind. Um, we have sixty students that are in community-based sites, eleven different sites, uh, including two that are just open this year, McLendon Hardware and the Tacoma Lutheran Retirement Community. We're also in the process of adding two additional sites, so we can continue to expand the opportunities for our eighteen to twenty-one-year-old students, also called interns. We've increased the data reporting opportunities, and as you see at the, the bottom of this slide, uh, in partnership with Sandra Jacobson and the Enrollment Services team, uh, we've developed a, a report that draws out the co-teaching classes that are being taught in our district. It provides information on, on both teachers that are involved, along with the number of special ed students and general ed students that are participating in each classroom. Ultimately, this is going to lead us to improved data collection around the co-teaching, and give us, uh, foundation and baseline data for improving our instructional practice within these classrooms. From the eighteen to twenty-one-year-old end of the spectrum, we talk about early learning in our preschool end of the spectrum as well. We have, um, baseline data you can see in two thousand ten on this next slide, where we had half of our children that were transitioning from special ed preschool programs into self-contained kindergarten programs. And over the time with the addition of peer-based inclusion preschool classrooms, uh, we had eighty-four percent of our preschoolers with disabilities that in June of two thousand sixteen were transitioning into general ed, uh, kindergarten classrooms. And certainly, we're maintaining the supports for children that need them, but the, the opportunity gap that Dr. Garcia referenced earlier, this is giving our, our children the opportunity to learn alongside their peers. We believe that, that, uh, in the end, this is going to improve our outcomes as they progress from the elementary to the middle and to the high school grades. Academic rigor, this is an exciting benchmark for, for secondary especially. As you look at this particular slide, it talks about, uh, the percentage of students from special education that took AP, Running Start, College in the High School, IB types courses. Uh, these are eleventh and twelfth graders specifically, and with respect to that benchmark. And you can see in two thousand and thirteen, we were at a half a percent of our special ed, ed students versus in two thousand sixteen, we had twelve point two percent. Our goal has been set to be twenty percent, and that helps align with the district goal of seventy-two percent of our secondary students district-wide. Uh, this is twenty percent related to special education students. This slide is an LRE, uh, least restrictive environment-based slide, and if you look in two thousand and eight, we had roughly thirty-five to thirty-six percent of our, uh, special education students that were participating in the gen ed classroom at eighty to a hundred percent of their day. Meaning, uh, a strong majority of our students in special education were being pulled out of general ed classes to receive their supports. As, as our target, you can see at the top of the slide, where it talks about the state target, is at fifty-two point two five percent. We've worked hard over the last, well, in the, in this slide's case, eight years, but certainly as part of the Urban Collaborative's initiative to better include special education students, you can see that in two thousand and sixteen, we've achieved a fifty-four point nine zero percent, which exceeds the state target and the state average for the first time in, in the history of, of our keeping track of this information. So it's, it's an exciting and positive, uh, reflection of the inclusive work that's taking place. Again, providing students opportunities to learn that gen ed curriculum with their peers. We've set a goal of sixty-five percent by two thousand and twenty, and you see that red line that's off to the side. That reflects a district-wide number that, that is our target. We believe that it's an ambitious goal, but we also believe it to be achievable, and certainly relevant to the students that we're educating in Tacoma. In this next slide, we drill down a little bit more to show you how that number is impacted at, at high school, middle school, and elementary. I point out that this year, the elementary, uh, buildings have an eighty-two, a hundred percent LRE of sixty-five point seven. That doesn't necessarily mean that, that they've achieved, and therefore can, can stop where they are, 'cause we certainly believe we have more opportunities out there for including students. Um, and you can also see that at the middle school and the high school, with forty-nine percent and forty-four percent respectively, we've got continued work to do in order to achieve our goals and achieve the state targets. We're working with each building individually on, on that data as well, so the building principals know their data related to their school, and we're working with them, whether it's through co-taught classes, whether it's through access to AP and IB courses, and helping them find new pathways for our students to achieve those opportunities. A school I'd like to highlight with this next slide is Baker Middle School. Uh, in two thousand fifteen, at the end of the school year, we had a principal voice session in which several principals from across the district were brought in to provide the Student Services Department feedback. And in that process, uh, we actually provided them some data, and had a chart that showed every single school's LRE for their eighty to, to a hundred percent students. Baker Middle School was the bottom of that chart. They were the last school, and if you know Scott Rich, the principal of the school, you know he's not okay with that. Scott and, and his team, his assistant principal, Amy Lavold, uh, as well as a number of other, uh, teacher leaders in that building, took the initiative to, to redesign Baker's response to that. And you can see this slide, they started at sixteen percent in two thousand and twelve, and have, have increased their LRE performance to thirty-eight percent. As we looked at how they did that, uh, at the end of last spring, uh, Scott and Amy and a couple of other, uh, district administrators and leaders went down to Evergreen School District in Vancouver, and visited some schools that are also on the forefront of inclusive practices. Uh, coming back from that, uh, Scott and Amy couldn't stop talking about, uh, the ideas and the visions that they had for implementation in their building, and, and frankly, um, the energy that, that, that conversation created and started within their building has been fun to watch. Uh, over the course of that spring, if you'll go to the next slide, Anne McPartland, their special ed teacher department chair, who's actually with us tonight, so I wanna credit Anne and, and recognize her work. The chart that you see on this slide represents a, a ranking of every single special education student in that building, and I've whited out names, but you can see that every student was evaluated related to reading, written language, math, social emotional skills, and then some other impacts. And if it was a blue box with the number four, those are students that, that, hey, they're in gen ed classes, or they're ready to go. If it was a green box with number three, those ones are the students that are on the cusp that could succeed in a gen ed classroom with the right support, and therefore some co-taught opportunities we're developing. Number two students, and the red students, were ones that, or, sorry, the, the yellow boxes are students for whom, uh, some of those opportunities could be supported differently, um, but perhaps through the LRC setting that they were in, drop-in types of sessions. And then you see the number one boxes that are, are red boxes, that represent students for whom self-contained options, um, truly are. for whom self-contained options truly are their least restrictive environment. But that work was done on every single student with special education needs in that building, and they were very intentional about how they then built their master schedule. Their team met on Saturdays and over the summer to develop a master schedule that responded to the needs of their students, and that's where they got to that thirty-eight percent increase for this year.
If I may, speaking with Anne McPartland, she tells me, we're doing, this is the I, this is the I of the IEP, the individual. They're literally taking student by student to plan, most appropriately for each student. So, thank you, Anne, for your leadership as team lead at Baker, and thank you to all of the team members and staff at Baker.
What we take away from all of that? Oh, I skipped a slide, sorry. The co-teaching as a how for getting to that inclusion? What we're looking at with that is, is our goals have been set to have co-teaching available to students in every comprehensive school, and you can see that we started in two thousand and fifteen with seven co-taught buildings that had co-teaching and twenty-three classes total in the district of co-teaching. This year, we're starting with co-teaching occurring in thirteen, and I'm hearing that it's on the verge in that fourteenth comprehensive building, with a hundred and fourteen classrooms. Our goals, you could see the schools to have all fourteen with co-teaching opportunities, and our classes, that a hundred and eighty-eight number basically reflects that we would like to have a co-taught class in math, science, language arts, and social studies for each grade level of student from sixth through twelfth grades, so that every grade level has an opportunity, every student at every grade level has that opportunity. So the key takeaways from all of this, we're getting more students in gen ed classes, including the classes with rigor. We've met the state target for inclusion for the first time, and that's news we're proud of, and we're on trajectory to meet our inclusive goals related to co-teaching and related to LRE and to impact the learning of students with disabilities in ways that we've never before reached in Tacoma. So, that's, that's exciting news. Next steps, we have professional learning networks that are ongoing, we have professional development related to co-teaching, collaboration continues across the district, and continued tracking of data, mining of data, and the opportunity to continue to grow just follows that information that leads.
And that concludes our report for you this evening. Our next report will be on April twenty-seventh. In between time, you will see quarterly reports and our department goals in your Friday reports, and as well as you will see in the monitoring reports, looking at the subgroup data. We thank you, as always, for your support and your, your push on us for every student every day.
So just real briefly to add, you see that all the quarterly reports are available online. This is actually our tenth quarterly report, and so I guess it's not a quarterly report since it's a biannual report, but ten, all, ten reports, including the complete audit, if you will, or report is available online for folks. And so if you're new to watching this, it may seem like, where is this coming from? If you get a chance, you can see that where all the work continues to build on itself over the course of, since February of two thousand and thirteen. So, you can find that work under Student Support Services, and then click on the Urban Collaborative button, and it takes you through all those reports.
Thank you. I think, you know, this work is phenomenal, where we, where we've come in such a short period of time. One thing I'm really happy to see is that you're going to have data on the co-teaching, and I think that will help us let people know this really works. Because at the start, I know there's some pushback, and I heard from some parents, and I'm not hearing that now, but I think when we have the data, I know we had some data from Stadium showing there was a great point higher for the gen ed kids and the special ed kids in co-teaching, and I think that kind of data's going to show people this does work. Also, for what it does for the social and emotional learning for the, you know, for our kids in, in this ped program, I think of the video we did of the young man at Lincoln, and we kind of debated whether to use that when we went back to Cube, whether that would be the video that we would use or the one with little Lamari in at, at McCarver Elementary. But anyway, I just want to, you know, say that from my perspective, I don't have any specific questions right now, but just keep up the good work and keep us, let us know what's going on. And also, I'm really pleased, because it was something that I mentioned that I was going to bring up, is that we're now getting that intervention framework, and I can't wait to see how, what that looks like when that gets rolled out and that we're really systematized where we are in doing intervention across the district. The goals, where we are, you know, I think far exceeded some of my expectations about how fast we could do this work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Director Wenskill.
So I have some specific questions related to the self-contained classrooms. And I want to know about the philosophy of putting K through five together in a TLC class, Therapeutic Learning Center behavior class, and so what is the philosophy behind that?
Well, at one time, we did have our, our TLC classrooms, our TLCs serve our students with emotional behavior disabilities. At one time, we did have a K-two and a three-five program, but they were at different schools, and that meant our students that often struggle with transitions, we were transitioning them even more so. So then we brought them together into one school, and then we had a K-two and a three-five in one school, and that was a lot of kids, that was a lot of kids in one school, and we weren't at their neighborhood schools. And so we took the approach of, with the recommendations of the Urban Collaborative, to work to be inclusive and work to be in their neighborhood schools as much as possible, and so we worked to regionalize that, so we opened more programs at the elementary level, and then we did a shift to a, to a K-five in order to have them all at, at their neighborhood school, or at least into the feeder for their middle school. That did create a challenge for us, we, there has been some concern shared around the, the K-students, we looked at our data, and we have very, very few kindergarten students with, that are in a TLC classroom, so then we specifically look at the scheduling of our staff and our resources to minimize the impact. And it's, it's an issue we continue to work through with, with the individual buildings where we do have kindergarten students. For the most part, our students are K-two, I'm sorry, are two through five in our TLC programs, that's, I'm generalizing that.
So, I will say that I do not like the idea of a five-year-old and an eleven-year-old being in the same classroom. And I am hearing some problems out in the community from people whose children are in those classes, teachers. I think we're having trouble finding a good teacher, I think it's a little bit of chaos in those classrooms. I just don't think it's in the best interest of our students. And, and I just kind of, I wonder a little bit about the training also. The other day, I, someone I knew took me to lunch and talked to me about a situation, and it was an autistic child, and he's already, in the first three weeks of school, he already was suspended for seven days. And the parent, the mother, it's actually the grandmother's raising him, she's called in the middle of work, she's the only person running her office, to come and get him, he's, he's out three days at a time or four days at a time. And I always thought we really looked at what the disability was, and we took into consideration the behavior and the disability, and to me, the things that I heard that he was acting on were things that are consistent with the disability. And so I'm really concerned about that, and especially the first few weeks of school when they're getting used to a new teacher, because that's what, he was getting used to a new one, students are having to get used to one another, and I think it's just very onerous on a family to have that, that kind of thing happen.
I just want to add that this work is extremely complex, and each individual student is, is different, and so as we build structures, the structures are the starting point of the conversation of individual placement and what meets the individual placement. Sometimes the structures work, and sometimes they don't. In this individual case, it's, it's how the staff responds, it's how they work with the family, you have the update of where that, that situation landed, and ongoing training is something that we have to continue to, to provide our staff, and the special ed team is, is committed to that, and so we're not going to shy away from that, because this work is, like I said, complex, not only for the staff inside the classrooms, but the staff within the schools, and not every student is the same. And so we're not suggesting in our work that whether it's a group of students K-placed in a, in a grade setting, two-five, or three-five, or four-five, or just five, that that structure will be the only option for them. We really have to look at it as a case-by-case situation. And then we're working not only with the teachers' union, but with the staff to say, so what are the individuals' professional development means? When we talk about co-teaching and when we talk about immersion, those are goals, those are what Board Member Heinz described earlier as big audacious goals, but they are not mandates that says X number of students have to be in this, because we then have to look at each situation case by case and what is the best situation for that student. So, I hear you, Director Wenskill, about the need for additional training and support. It's an ongoing conversation, it's an increased opportunity for us, and it's unfortunately specific to the individual student sometimes, and what kind of training and support can we provide them, which adds to that complexity.
On, on Tuesday, and I want to add to this, I did a walk-through school with, at Bose with Aaron Wilkins, and they do have a TLC, and I observed it for quite a while, and it was second through five, kids were doing great. During the, during the time I was there, we have a coach for the TLC, Shayla Raphael, came, and she was helping, giving the teacher some strategies on how to deal with one of the kids who was having a bad day, although I think he got better when he asked me how I got so old, and I explained it to him, which was, it was fun. But I was just impressed with what was going on at that school, and I talked with some of the other teachers, and they said, you know, things are going well and good parent involvement, and I think it's something new and it takes a little while, but we see change in, at there, and Bose is pretty typical of the schools in our district, high poverty and diversity, and, but, and there were little kids, and this little guy was a second grader, and, but I'm not sure my answer helped, but he laughed and it was fine. But Shayla was there, and I'm just saying that the support is there, and what I saw was a very well-managed classroom with a even young teacher, but a very well-trained teacher, and was able to, kids were off doing different activities and other kids were engaged, so. Anyway, that's just my observation of being on the ground in the, in the last week. Director Cobb.
Wait, I wasn't, I'm not finished yet. So, so my concern, if, if a principal is really having trouble with the, perhaps a new teacher getting used to that kind of class, and I don't know if they're calling down to you, are you actually going to the school and spending a lot of time trying to help them out? Because I am hearing that there are some individual classrooms in the district that are particularly impacted.
Absolutely, we work very hard to be responsive, as Director Viall just mentioned, as far as we have instructional facilitators and behavior specialists that go out, mentioned Shayna Raphael is a phenomenal support for us. As well, here with us tonight is Director Anne Jones Amelie and Sarah Woodard, they support at the elementary level, and I know they personally have been spending a great deal of time, I think they're racking up the mileage getting out around to all the schools as, as principals are calling, and they're reaching out to go sit alongside them, to go help support them, to, to brainstorm, to problem-solve, and develop strategies together.
And then one other thing that I did hear last year, and it was a middle school, and it was a TLC class again, and it was not, there was not a lot of teacher-directed instruction, but it was more, they were working on a computer. Well, young children with a learning disability, or with a behavior disability, don't really do well with a screen and doing their work, so I hope we would be looking at that and taking feedback and sort of modifying how we do that for our students.
Absolutely, and I, I would offer anytime that, whether it's an individual board member or as a community member that they have concerns about that, you know, the best way that we're going to address those is in a case-by-case situation, and so we value when you, you are able to direct us and say, I'm hearing concerns about this school, or this building, or this classroom, or its supports, and that's where we start the conversation for them, is, is what is the supports? We look at the data, we did that same situation here, and we will continue to do that. So, if, if board members are hearing that from community, because they feel, the community feels that they are safer to communicate those, please get that, that information, and, and we'll look at that, and we also look at the trends. And so if we're seeing the trends across the district in a similar way, that's a great way for us then guide professional development as well.
Director Cobb.
I don't have any comments, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Director Heinz.
I very much appreciate the presentation, I think it's remarkable from where we've come. This work is not easy, this topic is one that districts across the country have wrestled with for years. I think quite frankly, this district has allowed, for many years prior to this new direction, for special education students to be marginalized, to be segmented, to be forgotten about, and what we've done is we've shined a light on those kids, and what you also have accomplished is recalibrating expectation about them as students, teachers, their expectations of those kids, one another, students to students by including them. The Lincoln example was fantastic, and I think most importantly, the students themselves. We have high expectations for them now. Now, are we perfect? No. Are we bold in pioneering this? Absolutely. And, and I would hate for us to extrapolate an instance, and if it's an instance we can get better, let's get better, but let's not extrapolate that to be representative of all of the great work that's occurring. It's truly transformational, and it's going to take time. A couple of questions, the data reporting, so as a district, we're looking at data every nine weeks, how are we incorporating data on our special education students into those nine-week reviews?
I can tell you, Mr. John Bell here, Weekly gives me a report on the data that he's looking, he creates a rotation with his team of what, which data are we looking at this week, and what's our follow-up with our buildings? So, that's one example, as well as our secondary and elementary team, they've got the benchmarks that, and, and the department goals that they're tracking and that they're working with, as John Bell referenced, and working with buildings, breaking it down into the, into the building level, and working to identify those next moves, and then we have a department retreat coming up that then we'll be looking at what's our quarterly report to date, and what are our next steps? And we just made a quick reference on there about a department dashboard, so been working with our project management team in getting a department dashboard set up to help be even more public with our data, and make it that much easier to, to track it.
My second question is, the twelve percent of students that are taking rigorous classes, do we have any sense of how that compares in other districts in the state or across the country?
I am not aware of that.
Unfortunately, I, I don't believe that many districts keep that data.
I think it's pretty incredible, back to my earlier comments of increasing expectations for our kids. Who says you can't be in a rigorous class? Stigma? I mean, let's put kids in the class and see how they do, and let's give them the support, and, and I love the, let's put the I in IEP, right? That's, and I think we're trying to do that for all thirty thousand of our kids, but especially for those kids that maybe have been left behind for decades and decades. So, I appreciate the good work, we're going to continue to monitor it, you have a bright spotlight on you, people are going to ask questions, and we're going to have to explain things because we're doing them differently, and folks don't understand them because it's a different approach, but it's data-driven, it's evidence-based, so we can make the business case for the approach and the effectiveness, and then continue to learn and grow and get better. So, thank you very much, I know it's tough work, and, and stat, and the boots on the ground that are out there doing it for those kids, thank you, it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
I, I know what Dr. Garcia just mentioned about other districts, when I've talked about some of our innovative stuff on some of the presentations I've been able to do with the Council on Urban Boards of Education, nobody was doing the work that we're doing. And I think they're worried about backlash in our, in their community, and I said, well, we don't do stuff, as Director Heinz had indicated, unless we know it's for the best of our kids, and we're going to have rough sledding, we've had it in some of our other, but now we come out on the, on the back end of all this, and I think all you have to do is hear the student voice of the kids, and I, I said to someone, even if it didn't increase academics, it created social and emotional growth for these kids well beyond what they have ever experienced in their lives, as they, as they say, we've heard that expression, and I've gone out to Mount Doma, where first time in my life, it makes me tear up, I feel like I'm a normal kid. And that to me says that we're doing, you guys are doing phenomenal work, and we're doing the right thing, and we're going to continue, and that's the I in the IEP. So, thank you, Jennifer, and we're here to support you and whatever you can do, and I'm looking forward to the data that will really, you know, help us continue to move forward. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Board comments or reports? Director Heinz.
I don't have anything this evening.
Director Cobb.
No comment either.
Just say, I went to the cross-country meet, and two Wilson boys came in first and second, and one Wilson girl came in first, and I think the stadium girls won overall, but they did not, had not determined.
And I think the stadium girls won overall, but they did not, had not determined which school won for the boys. It was pouring down rain, so it was good.
Dr. Garcia.
Just for those that are watching at home, we'll be watching and monitoring the weather over the weekend. We were fully scheduled with all of our activities. But feel free to, hopefully if there's power, check the, the websites. And we'll be taking all of our cues from the weather experts. Working closely and collaboratively with Pierce County as well as the city of Tacoma. And so we, we lean on them and their expertise. And, and you'll see even some recommendations coming. And those recommendations are directly from those folks because we are not weather specialists. And so please take those with guidance and knowing that they're coming from our, our colleagues who have much greater expertise in there. Keep safe. I'd like to tell you, keep dry, but that would mean you would only be inside. So we'll just go with keep safe.
All right. And as my three sons, who all played fast football, would tell you, playing in the wind and the rain is the best. So I assume we will be having football games. Announcements of future board meetings. There's no study session on October twentieth, two thousand and sixteen. Our next board meeting will be Thursday, October twenty seventh, two thousand and sixteen, six P.M., regular meeting. And Thursday, November tenth, two thousand and sixteen, six P.M., regular meeting. President would entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second to adjourn?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All, you want to stay? Okay. It's nice and warm and cozy in here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pause. We are adjourned. Thank you. Good meeting. Great presentation.
So Max has Mr. Oak for his home room.
Does he? I love how, he, my niece had him in fourth grade or fifth grade. My niece had him in fifth grade and my, our son had him for reading just over the summer.
Yeah.